First meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. First order of business is to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Next order of business is to review and act to approve the minutes of the October 2015 meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor.
Mr. Chairman, sorry, I was not present at that meeting, so I will abstain from voting.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and so it's three aye and one abstention. Next is announcements. We have three announcements. The Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee is still looking for one high school age student, be a resident, a high school age Shrewsbury resident, a junior or a senior, does not have to be a student at Shrewsbury High School, and any high school student can apply to serve on the committee for a one-year term set to expire on June 30, 2023. Interested applicants must be residents of the town and are asked to submit a letter of interest and a resume to the Office of the Select Board, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., or by email to selectboard@shrewsburyma.gov no later than November 8 at 4:30 PM. And if you have any questions, please contact the Office of the Town Manager at 508-841-8508 with any questions. Next announcement is about the ad waste drop-off and pickup. A reminder that the ad waste drop-off days will be taking place at the Highway Garage at 211 South Street from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Saturdays from October 22 to December 17. And the collection weeks where they'll be picking up roadside will be November 14 through the 18th and November 21 through the 26th. 21st through the 26th is a holiday week, so the Thursday collections will fall on Friday and Friday's collections will fall on Saturday. If you need more information, visit the Department of Public Works page on the town website at shrewsburyma.gov for more information. And final announcement is the Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting a Veterans Day ceremony on Friday, November 11 at 11:00 AM at the World War I Monument Memorial located at 1 Maple Avenue, the Farmmobile School. There will also be a reception at the Shrewsbury Public Library following the ceremony. Please visit the Parks and Recreation page on the town website at shrewsburyma.gov for more information. Okay. Mr. Magato, Mr. Mizikah, do you have anything this evening to report?
I do not.
Okay. Thank you. Public comment, we had nobody requesting to speak during the public comment portion, so we won't be doing that. So our next order of business is a public hearing with MB Spirits LLC, DBA MB Spirits, Adam Duchesne, manager at 200 Hartford Turnpike, Unit 2, application to transfer of the Section 15 All Alcoholic Beverages Package Store License from Iandoli Austins II, Inc., DBA Austin Liquors to MB Spirits LLC, MB Spirits. Good evening. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members. Stephen Miller, McDermott Quilty and Miller. With me is attorney.
Steve Rotalake is my, a Fletcher Tilden. My firm did the permitting for the Plaza and the multifamily component that abuts it.
And also Adam Duchesne, who's the proposed manager of record. But my background.
And you are, did I catch it? Did I miss it?
Attorney Steve Miller.
Steve Miller. If you said it, I missed it, I'm sorry.
So we're seeking approval for purchase of the Austin Liquors license and moving it to a new store abutting the new Demullis Market. The purchase price for the license is $500,000. It'll be totally funded by Demullis Supermarkets, Inc. All of the other costs will be borne by Demullis Supermarkets, Inc. MB Spirits, which will, subject to your approval, own the license, is wholly owned by Demullis Supermarkets. They currently have four other licenses in Massachusetts, including one that recently opened in Hanover. They've had one in Waltham for several years. They've owned over 25 or 26 licenses, probably more, in New Hampshire. So they're fully experienced in the sale of alcohol. They've never had a violation in any of their Massachusetts stores. The proposed store is 14,495 square feet. We have Adam Duchesne with us, who is the proposed manager. Adam has been working for the company for over 16 years. He started when he was a senior in high school, working, getting a job to help pay for his college. He's ended up, instead of working for a job to get through college, he ended up with a totally new career. He's worked his way up from assistant grocery manager to front-end manager, and now he's one of the senior managers that is on the opening team for their new stores. He has, because of his work with the company over the years, he has significant experience in the sale of alcoholic beverages through New Hampshire, and he most recently was on the opening team for Hanover and did all the hiring and participated in the training of their staff for the MB Spirits in Hanover. He's here, obviously, if you want to ask him any questions, you know, he is a Demullis lifer, I think.
Be careful, I started off that way and I ended up in the store I was at for 30 years.
Luckily, they move us around quite a bit, so.
Well, we only had one location, so. I forgot to mention that the hours of operation are being requested on the license, 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM Monday through Saturday, and on Sunday, 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we'd like to request a change to that. And so we'd like to request 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Monday through Saturday, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, when the store would be abutting the Demullis Markets, and it's their policy to not have the store open when the market's not open. So this, these hours would be consistent with the hours of the supermarket.
Okay. It's our application, so you can do what you want, but does the store stay open? Does the markets stay open longer hours at Christmas?
No.
No.
No, it's the same, same hours, no matter what.
Okay. Okay, so the request is from 8 to 9 and 8 to 8, right?
10 to 8 on Sunday and 8 to 9 Monday through Saturday.
Oh, wait a minute. On Monday through Saturday, it's 10?
Eight, 8 to 9, you had it right. Monday through Saturday, 8 to 9, and Sunday, 10 to 8.
Okay. Okay. Members of the board, any questions?
Just one. First of all, congratulations on the almost opening.
Thank you so much.
It's really exciting. So could we expect that you're going to be the person who opens this liquor store?
That is correct.
And will you be staying, or do you move on when the?
I will be there. That'll be my primary responsibility, will be working at the liquor store in Shrewsbury.
Great, thanks.
What the policy is that he'll be there, get the store up and running, go through the whole process, have the staff trained, and then they'll identify a new manager, and at that time will come in.
Come back.
Before the board with an application for your approval for a new manager of record.
All right. Great, thank you.
Any other questions? How many employees would work in the packaged store side, liquor store side?
Approximately, we've hired 10 so far, but we have some senior people as well that are going to be coming from our other locations that will be helping out, will be assisting through the grand opening process, and so, yeah, I would say about 15.
15? Okay. And when we was talking before the meeting, the packaged store is not going to open before the market?
That is correct. That is the plan, yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this application? Okay. There being none, I entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in second. Is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve MB Spirits LLC, DBA MB Spirits, application for a transfer of license of Iandoli Austins II, Inc., DBA Austin Liquors, Section 15 Alcoholic Beverages Package Store License. And I'll put the hours in, for the hours of Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We're all excited about having you come in, so we're waiting.
We're excited to be a part of the community. Thank you very much.
Okay. Our next order of business is our tax classification hearing with our principal assessor, Ruth Anderson. Ruth, are you, are you, are there L O assessors here, or?
I think I'm running solo today.
Okay, I think you can handle it. I'm not worried about that. Okay, so you can start whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, and welcome to Fiscal 23 Classification Hearing. For the record, my name is Ruth Anderson, and I'm currently serving as your principal assessor. So the purpose of this hearing is for the assessors to report on final values for Fiscal 23 and to ask the Select Board to adopt a residential factor, which will determine how taxes in Shrewsbury are allocated between taxpayers for the current fiscal year. We will be asking for a motion to accept a residential factor of one and authorize me as a principal assessor to electronically sign the LA 5 on Gateway to obtain certification from the DOR of the Fiscal 23 Tax Rate. This presentation could be renamed as the Assessors' Information Extravaganza, because we'll be providing you with incredibly large amounts of data representing a summary of the work our department accomplished over the course of the year. Our values were certified on October 20, which means our DOR representative reviewed and analyzed both our process and the resulting assessments and determined them to be within the guidelines set by the Division of Local Services. All values for Fiscal 23 are reflected of the real estate market in Shrewsbury for calendar year 2021. Fiscal 23 is an interim year in our five-year revaluation cycle. Last full revale was for Fiscal 21. Next one will be for Fiscal 26 and every five years thereafter. I like to include this in the classification hearing every year, a list of important terms that will show up later in the presentation, so that everyone understands what we're talking about when we say levy and new growth. So in general, all property is assessed for Fiscal 23 by what was true on the assessment date of January 1, 2022. The assessment date is set by statute, and it's always the January 1 prior to the start of the fiscal year. Shrewsbury is what's called a 653 community, meaning the community accepted a local option that allows us to capture new growth through June 30, 2022. The assessors are responsible for classifying property according to its use, so that each property is assessed properly. This list shows the five classes of property in Massachusetts. Shrewsbury does not have anything classified under Class 2 Open Space. The town continues to grow through new construction and alteration of existing properties. The Edgemere Development remains under construction and should be completed over the course of this fiscal year. The 250 apartments are done, and the retail components are moving along. The properties at Centec North are expected to be completed this year as well, and there are several apartment complexes in various stages of development. Since the start of last fiscal year, we've seen 23 permits for residential new construction, 45 for additions such as finished basements, and adding a second floor to what was originally a ranch, which seems to become, be becoming a very popular option in town. And there are over 200 permits for interior and exterior alterations, including updating kitchens and baths, windows and siding, and 65 permits for commercial construction. Total permit values are coming in at over $86 million. Last fiscal year, the Board of Assessors granted 216 statutory exemptions to seniors, those that are blind and veterans, for a total exemptive tax, excuse me, over $169,000. We also granted 30 abatements after appeal evaluation, abating almost $43,000 in tax. Since last year, we have added 12 single-family parcels, 38 condos into two-family properties. Overall, valuation changes by class were higher than last year and are reflective of the market in Shrewsbury. So let's talk about those adjustments to value. In Massachusetts, taxes are assessed "ad valorem," which means "to the value." Each property must be assessed to reflect its full and fair cash value, based on what it could have received if it had been exposed to the market during the announced year, which is dated earlier for us as 2021. So the market in central Massachusetts in general, and Shrewsbury in particular, remained incredibly strong throughout 2021 and so far through 2022. This slide shows the history of sales in Shrewsbury going back to 2019, and you can see that sale prices have risen dramatically, with buyers paying over the asking price for single-family homes and condos after a shorter time on the market over the last two years. The breakdown of value changes for residential properties reflects the strength of the market in 2021, with single families increasing by 13.77% and condos by 14.25%. On the commercial, industrial, and personal property side, the increases are still fairly substantial, but not quite at the rate of the residential. And overall, our values increased for Fiscal 23 by 12.58%. So the LA 4 is the form that's submitted to the Department of Revenue for Value Certification, and this version shows the changes between last year and this year, and it's detailed by use code. So valuation is only part of the equation when it comes to a taxpayer's annual bill. The levy is the other half of the calculation. So this shows the historic values by class going back 10 years, and includes the total value for the municipality and the resulting tax rate. If the Select Board votes to maintain a single tax rate for Shrewsbury this year, it will be $13.12. Looking at the same data in a more specialized way geared towards single-family residents, this shows how the average single-family value has changed over the years, as well as the resulting tax bill. So what is the levy? The levy is the amount that needs to be collected through taxation to meet the budget that's been approved at town meeting, after crediting all other funding sources. So this slide shows the total budget, the amounts credited through state and town receipts, like school and lottery distributions, excise taxes and permit fees, as well as amounts transferred from free cash stabilization or borrowing. The balance after crediting all of those other receipts is the levy, and this year it is $103,161,871.38, which is 61.52% of the total budget. So that's what we need to raise through taxation. For those of us who are more visual, the graph shows the same breakdown, without as many words. So another term from the glossary shown at the beginning of the presentation is the levy limit. Ever since Proposition 2.5 was enacted, towns are limited in how much the levy can increase year over year. We start with last year's levy limit. We add a growth in 2.5%, hence Prop 2.5, to reach this year's levy limit, which is To that number, we can add excluded debt or capital expenses to reach our maximum allowable levy, which is the highest amount we can raise without an override. The difference between the maximum allowable levy and the actual levy this year is $259,576. So moving on to the rate. The rate is simple math. It's calculated by dividing the total levy by the total taxable value in the town. This year, the result of that equation is .0131199, which gives us a tax rate of $13.12 per thousand of assessed value. Our office is often asked about the relationship between assessment and their tax bill. The levy determines the amount of money needed, and the value determines each owner's proportionate share of that levy. The top calculation shows our current situation, and the taxes on a property assessed at $600,000. If property values go up across the board by 20%, our $600,000 house is now valued at $720,000, but the rate would drop to 1093, and the total tax would be almost exactly the same. The flip side is also true. If the market goes down by 20%, the house is now valued at $480,000, the rate is $1640, and the tax bill is exactly the same. Shrewsbury continues to be a majority residential community, with that percentage increasing over the last 10 years by about two percentage points. If this board does decide to split the tax rate, meaning different rates for residential and commercial industrial properties, this chart shows you how those changes would affect the taxpayers in each class. With the current ratio of residential and commercial industrial properties being about seven to one, it needs to be stated that for every dollar saved on a residential tax bill, an additional $7 would be paid by those commercial, industrial, and personal property So this board can also grant an exemption of up to 35% of the average assessed value of residential properties used as a primary residence of the owner. It's called a residential exemption. If adopted, this option increases the residential tax rate and essentially shifts the burden of the residential portion of the levy from the lower value to the higher-valued homes. This slide shows you that there are only 15 communities that adopted this exemption last year, and you'll note that most of them are towns with a high percentage of seasonal residents, where the municipality has chosen to have the owners of the higher-valued vacation homes pay a higher amount than their year-round residence. The small commercial exemption is the same philosophy, it just is on the commercial side. This is the final option before the Select Board tonight, is whether to grant a small commercial exemption, which shifts the tax burden from parcels occupied by small businesses to those occupied by larger enterprises. Only 14 of the 351 communities in the Commonwealth adopted this exemption last year. And this list shows the top 15 taxpayers in Shrewsbury for the current year. So the next few slides will show how Shrewsbury compares to neighboring or similar communities in Massachusetts, and all of this data is from Fiscal 22. We keep printouts of these pages at our counter in the Assessor's Office to provide a visual on how tax bills here compare to our neighbors. You will see that while our average single-family value falls in the middle of the pack, our rate and average single-family tax bill are the lowest. So this first slide is a comparison between Shrewsbury and Grafton. Excuse me. And here are the numbers for Natick, which is similar to Shrewsbury in size, and the Natick, Northville, and Westville, excuse me. And this slide shows the state ranking, my goodness, I'm sorry, for where our single-family tax bill fell in comparison to the others last year.
Do you want to take a break?
Do you want water?
No, I've got water, it's just, I'm not used to talking this much. So this one shows where we fall on the state ranking with the communities that were in the comparisons. And finally, as a final public service announcement, I'd like to remind everyone here and anyone playing from home to check their property record card. No one makes mistakes on purpose, but they do happen, and an error made years ago on a property record will carry forward until it's corrected through a new inspection. Also, things like grade and condition affect value. Something that was determined to be good in 2000 may be average in 2022. So if you build a new house in 2000, and we grade it as good, and you live in it, and you take care of it, and you do all the things that you do in a house, 22 years later, it might not be good anymore. It might be average, and that is going to affect your value. So our biggest goal is to have all assessments be accurate, but we can't ensure that unless we're allowed to inspect a property. And the record cards are available on our Assessor's page of the website or by stopping into the office. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Besides a coughing pit.
Questions from members of the board?
Just something that I always think is really important to explain when you talk about open space and you say we don't have any. Like, I think for people watching at home, they see open space that we have, like, but there's a difference between the taxable, and I was just wondering if you could just explain that, because you do a very nice job of explaining it.
Sure. So open space is, it's generally, the open space classification is generally reserved for property that is protected and taxed at a different rate, but not in chapter land. So I'm not sure who understands about Chapter 61, 61A and 61B. We could classify things as open space, but they're not in chapter, so it's just a different classification. There are plenty of spaces that are open and natural, it just doesn't reach that classification. It's valued differently if it's classified as 200.
Thank you.
So if, to be classified as open space, the owners of the property would have to do things to make it more restrictive.
Yes.
To protect it. So if it just sits as virgin land or undeveloped, that doesn't make it open space for tax purposes?
So, open space, I misspoke. So they don't have to do anything special to keep it as open space. Open space land, if you had a split rate in the community, it's taxed at the commercial rate, even though it might be, I mean, it's not going to be developed. So it's like vacant land taxed at the usually higher commercial rate for whatever reason, depending on how it's classified.
Okay, and we have the same rate.
And since. And since we have a split rate, there's no need to have anything classified as open space.
Okay. Thank you. Any other question? No?
Just, if you could remind me. So there's an excess capacity of just over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We could increase the tax to bring us to that maximum.
Yes.
Okay. And we're, but based on your calculation of our needs, we are coming in slightly below.
So it's based on the budget that's approved at town meeting. So the town leadership decided not to spend every dime, so to speak. So there's about two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars left there that they could have added to the budget and thereby increased spending and increased the rate, and they chose not to.
Right. Thank you.
But that levy capacity still remains on the books. And next year, that money is still, it's available to use in next year's budget. I mean, the following year's budget. It's just unused levy capacity.
Yeah, but it's not real money.
Well, right. But it's not, it's not money, but the capacity is still there. We don't lose it because, we don't lose the capacity because we didn't spend it.
Right. So next year, we'll take this year's levy limit, add the two and a half percent to that.
Right. Thank you. Anything else? Does that make sense?
It does. You do a great job
Oh, thank you.
Of really laying out a very complex calculation. And I know a lot of residents sort of struggle because they look at that net tax rate. And sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. So thank you for walking us through that.
And that two and a half percent is a big point, because people assume that that means their bill can't go up by more than two and a half percent. And we do a lot of educating at the counter.
I think all of this is, you know, obviously with sensitivity around the tax rate and the tax bill for residents. So, thank you.
Before I open it up to the public, Ms. McAdoo, you have any questions or comments?
No, nothing further than that.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that'd like to be heard on this matter? Okay. Given none, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I have one more comment, if I could, before we close the hearing.
Sure.
So one of the things that I always look at when I'm thinking through, you know, the factor that we set and why we don't typically use a split tax rate, I always think about what it costs to provide services to a residential customer versus what it costs to provide services to a commercial customer. And you said in your presentation that were we to adopt a split tax rate, we would be reducing the burden on the residential customer, but actually increasing the burden by seven dollars per thousand, is that correct, on a commercial?
For every dollar saved on the residential side, it's seven additional dollars on the commercial side.
Okay. So just one of the things, I was wondering if you could just talk a little bit about what it costs to provide services to a residential customer versus what it costs to provide services to a commercial customer?
Yep. So I was actually asked to look into this. Full disclosure, I had never heard of this calculation before, so I had to beg for help from the town manager's office, which I got very, very quickly. So based on these numbers for fiscal twenty-three, for every dollar spent by a residential, or every dollar collected, I'm sorry, by a residential tax bill, we spend a dollar and forty-four cents. And for every dollar that we collect from, on a commercial, industrial, or personal property tax bill, we spend fifty-seven cents. So the money coming in is being spent much more heavily, almost three times, on the residential services rather than the commercial ones.
Right. I just think that that's really, it weighs on my decision-making, because I already see commercial carrying some of the burden for the residential customers in that kind of equation that you set out there. The other question that I had for you, when we talk about the exemption for small business, it sounds like that would be something that would benefit small business. But am I correct that like that also would include like a bank branch that has like fewer than ten employees? So it's one of those things that sounds good, but you have to think about the unintended consequences of who's being exempted or getting that.
Yeah. And when you think about trying to bring commercial properties into Shrewsbury to help relieve the burden on the residential taxpayers, you're looking for the big hit, right? You're looking for the bigger business. So if you have, if you adopt this, then you're telling potential businesses that the bigger you are, the more you're going to pay.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Isn't that also, it doesn't necessarily help a small business. It's the building owner, right?
That's correct.
So you could have several small businesses in a building. If the owner decides not to pass those savings on, the owner of the building doesn't necessarily help the renter.
That's exactly true. So if you have a small strip mall with a pizza place and an accountant and a beauty salon, the owner of the property is going to get the break. But, and even if they do pass this, you know, they're going to increase their rents, that kind of a thing, which is going to increase the cost of your pizza and your haircut and your doctor visit.
Not many municipalities use that, right?
That's correct. I think the list shows there's fourteen within the entire Commonwealth.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second? Okay. Do you have a motion to second? All ahs in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so voted. Okay. So, we have a decision to make. Split tax rate or not a split tax rate?
So I'll make a motion.
Sure.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to adopt a residential factor of one for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three tax rate, to not adopt a residential exemption for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three tax rate, to not adopt a small commercial exemption for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three tax rate, and to sign the LA five form and authorize the principal assessor to digitally sign the LA five form on Gateway.
Second?
Okay. We have motion to second. Any further discussion? Given none, ahs in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So voted. You all set?
I'm all set.
Great.
No more choking.
Nice job.
Thank you.
And you said that information is available at the counter that you showed tonight, and it's online?
It will be on. But I'll put the classification hearing online probably tomorrow. And then I'll have to print things out and get them at the counter. So hopefully tomorrow, but within a couple of days for sure.
Yeah, it was kind of hard to read that off the screen, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next order of business is a meeting with Civicco Greenlee regarding the development, proposed development of Wentz Seven Maple Ave, which is a former Beale School. Anybody from Civicco would like to come forward?
Good evening.
Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Yes. So I am Andrew Consigli from Civicco Development, and...
Alex Zakurski, co-developer with Greenlee Development.
Great. Should we begin?
Sure.
Great. So thank you to select board for having us back to present an update to Bill Commons, this exciting ground-up mixed-use development in the town center. So tonight, we would like to discuss the development team's progress since signing the LDA, as well as the contents of this week's submission to the planning board. We will also outline what our next steps will be, including the neighborhood outreach meeting at the public library and the upcoming planning board public hearing. Next slide. So for the timeline, since signing the land development agreement back in mid-March, our development team has been working diligently. This has included a preliminary plan submittal at the end of April. We have also engaged a licensed surveyor and completed a full existing condition survey, which was complete at the end of July. Once we received the survey, our consultant team of architects, civil engineer, and landscape architect were able to officially kick off the schematic design phase and start permitting the drawings for the special permit application submittal that we are for this week. Next slide. So the preliminary package included an overall site plan, proposed building elevation, and rendered site plan views down Maple and Haskell Street. Actually, flip to the next, I think it's the next slide. Maybe I'll have one. No, actually, go back now, sorry. And just, yeah, you can stay on the perspective. Sorry, I thought I had different slides.
You do. It's right here.
Did I just completely mess up everything?
No, it was my fault, I'm sorry.
Sorry. There we go. That's the one. So just wanted to explain about the mix of uses here. So the program included fifty-five residential units, with seven of those units being affordable at eighty percent AMI. The total building area of seventy-five thousand square feet, with the commercial space of seventy-seven hundred square feet. The building height is forty feet tall to the top of the roof peak and includes three floors. We proposed at the time one hundred and thirty-three parking spaces, twenty of which will be reserved for public use, and nine would be along, parallel spaces along Haskell Street. Next slide. There we go. So for the design of Beale Commons, we follow the recommendations outlined in the town center study, along with the town center design guidelines. Some of the elements that were highlighted in the town center study that guided our develop, our design effort here, we're creating a building that engages the street and reinforce the traditional pattern set by some of the older buildings in the town center. The facade design of the Beale, of Beale Commons is reminiscent of traditional New England architecture with simple volumes and vertically proportioned openings. The massing is broken down by creating offsets in the building wall and by using authentic materials such as brick and wood lap siding. We are currently in discussions with a few full-service restaurants and also cafes for the commercial space along Maple Avenue that you see in this rendering here. The existing War Memorial is also integrated into the overall landscape design while creating a series of public spaces along Maple Avenue that complement the commercial uses. Next slide. Turning the corner, the design transitions into a more residential scale, stepping down with the natural slope of Haskell Street. Street front stoops activate and engage the sidewalk along the street. Next slide. These were the preliminary elevations along both Maple and Haskell Street that were submitted, which brings us here today. Next slide. And submitting the application to the planning board. So this application contains the architectural, civil, and landscape drawings. Also included is a traffic study, stormwater report, and a community impact narrative. To the right, you'll see sort of the drawing list of architectural and civil and landscape drawings that were submitted. Next slide. Permits, the application includes requests for a site plan approval and special permits for a mixed-use development, building height over thirty-five feet, front and rear, front and side yard setbacks greater than ten feet, and parking at the side of the building. Next slide. These drawings that I'll flip through here, the drawings for the architectural scope included all the levels, which start with the lowest level along Haskell Street, shown here. Next slide shows the ground floor plan with commercial spaces along Maple Avenue, the common amenity space for the apartments that include a large entrance lobby and fitness room. And this would also include the second level apartments above Haskell Street, because the slope of the road transitions down. And next slide. The next slide here shows the second floor plan. And then third, next slide is the third floor plan. And you can see sort of the transition down to the lower level there, which is the roof along Haskell. And then next slide is followed by showing some typical unit plans. And next slide is building elevations. Both, this is the Maple Avenue and Haskell side. And then next slide shows the rear elevations with the parking lot, facing the parking lot in the back. Next slide here is the landscape plan. A little hard to see, it's not colored yet, but you can see along Maple Avenue, there's a series of outdoor spaces, both public and sort of semi-private. The one at the corner is sort of a patio for the apartments, as sort of an amenity space. And then as you make your way down Haskell Street, you will see sort of private patios and stoops for the ground-level apartments. Next slide. So this is the existing condition survey. I won't spend too long on most of these items, I just sort of point them out. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Next slide. So this is the site layout plan, signifying the building footprint and the parking. Next slide. The grading and drainage plan. Next slide. The utility plan, showing all the surfaces coming in off of the street into the building. Next slide. And then this is also the soil erosion and sediment controls plan. Next slide. And then finally, the overall exterior lighting plan for the site. Next slide. So moving forward, this kind of brings us to the next steps. And the next meeting will be the neighborhood outreach, outreach meeting on November ninth, then the planning board public hearing on December first. And if all goes to plan and we get approvals, we plan on starting construction in the spring of twenty-three. And then occupancy and lease-up would happen about fifteen to eighteen months later, which is the fall, which puts us in the summer, fall of two thousand and twenty-four. That is generally the update. I think the last slide, we can close on. We're very excited about the next steps and happy to answer any questions anyone has.
I have a couple.
Yeah.
One's a curiosity question. Did you find any surprises with utilities underground? Something you didn't expect?
We have not found any surprises. And I'll turn to my colleagues here to make sure that, we have not, right? Correct? Yeah.
Right. I know we weren't sure if there was stuff in there that we didn't realize.
I mean, Bowler Engineering is on board, and they have a lot of experience in the town, too. So.
The rendering might be a little deceiving, but is part of that plaza in the front depressed?
It is about thirty inches from the residential level.
Where the monument is, in that drawing, it could be deceiving. Is the monument depressed?
Monument stays as is currently.
It's staying where it is?
Correct.
Okay. I thought it would be, but in that drawing, it looks like it's dropped. So it's dropped, the plaza's dropped behind the monument, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. There was a very kind of complex transition between all the grades in that area, but we want to keep the War Memorial kind of, obviously, we didn't want to touch and disturb that.
And one other question. I'll open up to members of the board. Did the apartment mix stay essentially the same?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So questions from board members?
All right. Can you give us a little insight on the traffic study?
Sam, do you want to speak to that? I know we just recently received it and, but yeah.
Yeah. This is Sam Scott Matone from Civicco. He sort of has been leading the effort with some of the consultants. So Sam, do you want to come up and pull a chair up and?
Is that mic fly?
It is.
So I know from the previous submission, we were at one thirty-three overall site for parking. We're now at one forty-six, so we added thirteen. And then based on the report, go ahead, Sam.
Yeah. We just received the traffic report, and they are projecting forty-nine additional trips in the AM peak hour and sixty-four additional trips in the PM peak hour. So they're, they're saying that the impact on the existing road network would be very limited with only one to two seconds additional delay in peak hour at the, at the main intersection.
But you don't have the split on that. That sixty-four vehicles... That sixty-four vehicles total, you don't know, that's total, right?
Yeah, that's entering and exiting.
Yeah. And it's kind of hard to have that without seeing the whole report, without knowing what the split is, what the turning movements are. You don't know when somebody's coming out onto Maple, if they're going right, left, which has a different impact on the traffic, right?
Yeah, we do have the turning movements.
I know you have them, but I mean, right now, we don't have that.
Right, yeah.
It's kind of deceiving without knowing what the movements are, how many cars are going to go down Wes, Haskell and go out.
And that's probably, that's outlined in the report.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's in the report, but I mean, right now, it's kind of not fair to be asking you to throw out those numbers.
Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely. I think we just received it, so we need to dig into it and probably can break it down at a different date.
But the follow-up on that question with the traffic, is that increase based on conditions now, because there's no traffic there? Is that what it's based on?
It's based on, so what they did was they projected out to the future condition, seven years into the future, twenty-twenty-nine.
What I mean, what's the baseline?
The baseline is the no-build. If the project wasn't built, they looked at the year twenty-twenty-nine, and then they looked at the year twenty-twenty-nine with the building.
So it?
And that, and the difference is the number of trips.
Yeah, I think the baseline is exactly what it is now, which is not.
Which is no traffic.
Which is no traffic.
So, it's not comparing it to?
The old use.
The school traffic was, because the school's been closed for what, two years?
Correct.
Pretty close. Okay.
That would actually be interesting to understand, too, is what it was when it was school compared to.
Right.
Yeah, I see where you're getting at, is, so maybe we can, if that isn't in the report, maybe we can follow up.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they had access to any of this.
Didn't we at one point, not to interrupt you, but talk about how many trips there were when it was a school?
Right.
I mean, I think that's really important information to have if we want to actually compare it to something that people remember.
People in traffic studies don't always jive, so it is what it is.
They could probably also make assumptions based on the number of students.
I mean, I think we know how many bus trips there were.
Yeah.
A day out of there. I remember that number at some point.
They know how many bus trips, they know how many teachers there were, but anyways, I'm just saying, it just, without having a full study, it's hard.
Yep.
Sam, did that report indicate parking demand or anything? Speak to any numbers?
Yes. The parking demand that they estimated based on the Institute for Transportation Engineers was sixty-seven spaces for the residential use and fourteen spaces for the commercial use.
Okay.
So, we're.
What, at peak hours?
Far exceed that, yes. I will note, too, we eliminated anything coming in off of Maple other than a curb cut for fire access in an emergency. So, everything has been pushed down on Haskell to allow for queuing of vehicles. The original RFP, we had a turnaround in the front, similar to the school, so we've eliminated that congestion at Maple.
Right. That first catch. Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, I was just, I was actually going to jump ahead to your next step. So, you've taken the initiative to schedule a meeting, a neighborhood outreach meeting, and I'd really like to understand your intent there and whether it's going to be a very similar presentation to today or what you will present.
Yeah, I think it will be an update on what we've submitted as part of the special permit and just give an overview of the project and answer any questions that we can, that will come up on the mix of units, the type of units, the type of retail, just giving an updated overview of the project essentially.
I anticipate you'll get some very specific and granular questions. So, is your intent to keep it very high level at this time?
Absolutely.
Pending the planning board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we felt it would be better to at least inform people, sort of the public of what the project is at a very high level right now. We're still working out a lot of details, obviously.
I know. I just, I would hope that we can level-set expectations and not frustrate people who might want to attend and get some specific answers.
Exactly, yeah. We will do our best.
Yeah, our entire consultant team will not be there, so we probably won't get too granular.
Mr. Mizikar, you don't have the number, right, of?
I believe it's between two-hundred-and-seventy-five and three-hundred.
Okay. I was just trying to look back through and I, that's what my memory is also.
That was a day, though.
A day when it was an operating school.
Correct.
I just know that we talked about the impacts of this project when we were first considering it as being less significant than the impacts of the space when it was a school.
Correct.
But again, there's traffic in the center of town, so I know that's something that people have on their minds when they think this through. To my colleague's point, I mean, I have a slide printout here, but it's still really small. Will you have like bigger, will you be able to utilize like larger plans for people to actually be able to look at, maybe on display boards or on tables?
That's the intention, yes.
Okay, because I was blowing things up on my iPad, but that's not going to work on paper for people.
No, we'll have boards set up.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a few questions. With the parking spaces, you said there's one hundred and forty-six parking spaces. Does this include the on-street parking on Haskell?
Does not.
So, does the project still include on-street parking on Haskell Street?
Those parallel spots will remain.
They'll remain, okay.
Yeah, we've been able to have ten of them.
Okay.
Whereas I think previously, we said we were going to have nine.
Okay.
But now that we've kind of got into the engineering and survey, we're able to get ten.
And then, there's still some spaces on Wesleyan that we haven't even counted.
Okay.
Correct.
I have another question. With the front stoops on Haskell Street, is that direct apartment entry or is that entry into like hallways and common areas?
It is, it's directly into the unit, but it's not directly into the unit from the sidewalk. It's only accessible from the unit itself.
Okay.
The grade change there is very complicated in terms of providing steps and getting it to be accessible, so we just made it accessible to the unit itself.
Okay.
We'll have vegetation that kind of outlines that area, too, to delineate sidewalk from sort of that private space.
Okay.
As well.
So, well, I'm sorry, would they be like patios for the individual units or would you be able to access your apartment from the sidewalk?
The anticipation is that with the vegetated edge, tenants shouldn't be traversing up that landscaping into their units.
Okay.
It may happen, obviously, but no, we have an eight-by-eight patio in those lower-level units.
Okay.
Yeah, but it'll help activate the street and, you know, so it's not just false, you know, doors.
Okay.
So.
All right, yeah, thank you for the clarification on that. I have one more question. So, you mentioned that there is going to be some patio space in the rear of the property that is for residents. Is there any like outdoor space for, that's like open to the public on the property at all?
Sure. You want to go back to the site plan? We can talk just kind of at a high level.
Probably that one is probably the best one, right there, yeah.
Sure. So, we're indicating twenty public spaces, right, to but the park area, that will be, remain the towns. The memorial, we're planning to have that whole front edge on Maple Ave to be public activated area in terms of seating, not just dedicated for the commercial tenants. So, that's around the memorial space. The terrace in the front that you see at the corner is elevated thirty inches and that is sort of just private to the residences.
Okay.
So, that elevation actually helps in terms of separating those uses on Maple Ave. On the rear, we have a drop-off area that is south of those two accessible parking spaces, but we are planning to have benches and some seating outside that public can use. The whole point is that the community can traverse through the site, access the park or whatever that green space becomes in the rear and be able to activate the entire space.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mizikar?
Any questions?
Okay. Any other questions?
Not right now, no.
It's a little early. I'm sure there'll be a lot more as they come up. Well, it's substantially what you said it was going to be, so that's encouraging. Didn't change that much. The, on the ground floor, going down Haskell and the interior, those are parking spaces what you would think would be the building, but.
So, they're covered, yes.
Covered spaces.
They call them sort of tuck-under parking spaces?
Right, right.
Yeah, and the reason for that is because the grade kind of starts going up as you, if you don't mind, I'll just go to the screen quickly.
So, the grade picks up as you get here?
Yeah.
And so, we had to keep sort of a level spot here where you can tuck under for parking spaces. So, those would be sort of, if you will, like coveted spaces, you know, for people that really need covered parking spaces.
Okay. So, you actually increased the number of spaces from the original?
That was on the original preliminary plan.
No, I mean, the number.
Overall number.
Oh, the overall number, yes. So, we have, it went from one thirty-three to one forty-six.
Okay. Okay. So, you're on the agenda for the planning board the first week in December?
December first, I think it was.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I just ask one more question? So, you said that the building height is a maximum of forty feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we did a average median grade around the site based on our survey and from the civil engineer, and that established the base point. And then, from there, it's forty feet to the top of the peak.
So, I do want to clarify that, though. Based on the bylaws and definitions, that is to the average slope of the roof. So, essentially, you have a pitched roof. That building height is at the center of that pitch based on the definitions of the town.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
It's a maximum of forty feet.
It's a maximum of forty.
Cut it slow.
Say that again?
Because the end is slow, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Our average elevation, I think, is six fifty-eight, if I'm recalling, where all the commercial entrances are. And the average is six forty-six or something like that. So, we're going forty from what that average grade is. We are trying to work, I think, the elevations so that those roof lines are a little bit more New England style. So, that elevation may change, but we're not exceeding the limitation of that forty-foot building height.
Do you ran this by the fire department, right?
The heights?
No, the layout.
Yeah, so we had an interdepartmental meeting with everyone. We incorporated a lot of all that feedback, which was great, into this most recent plan and set that you see.
Okay. Great. Any other questions?
I just actually, from Mr. Mizikar, what is the height of the current existing building that will, the Beale School? Do you know?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
I could probably find it here.
Yeah, we have it somewhere.
Yeah.
The police station's around thirty-eight, thirty-eight and a half, I think.
Okay. Just curious.
It's probably pretty comparable to what this is.
I'm pretty sure it's thirty-eight and a half. I can't remember if it's to that coupler or to the roof itself.
Okay. I'm just curious what the comparison is with the proposed building compared to what is existing onsite.
Yeah, we'll find that information out and at least we'll be able to talk to it following the meetings.
Thank you.
So, I'm sure it'll come up.
Yeah.
More questions?
Just one. So, you indicated that you increased the number of parking spaces from one thirty-three to one forty-six, so adding thirteen additional. Are any of them for public parking versus residential?
No, so we're keeping the twenty that was reserved for the public use, but the additional parking spaces were more for the commercial or residential, but probably commercial.
So, if I'm going to one of the commercial stores in the development?
Yes.
I can use that parking?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And the twenty is reserved for people that are not going to the development but to other areas potentially in the town center?
I'm sure there'll be a lot more questions as we.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, especially when you say that your study showed that the residential demand is sixty-four spaces, so there's excess. And I suppose as it goes through the process within town.
That was during peak hours, that wasn't, right?
If I understand the question right, so essentially, what ended up happening is we had a plan that was so conceptual, and then when we ended up kind of refining that plan, we were able to get more spaces, which is great. Those spaces are sort of for the development itself because we were, we don't really, we didn't really know yet what the commercial demand is going to be or the, actually, we do from the traffic study, but it would be to have that extra parking for the development, I think it would be well-served, right? Because, especially for the commercial, essentially.
Mm-hmm.
But we're still keeping the twenty reserved for public use, not commercial use or for the residential uses. Hopefully, that makes sense.
That's as clear as mine, huh?
No, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think that there will be some requests and we can figure out the right way to maybe see if there's some flexibility there.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Y'all up for now?
I think so.
I think there'll be before the board, planning board, a couple of times, there'll be opportunities for more. Okay, thanks for coming in.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
And that neighborhood meeting, anybody in town can go, right?
Anyone.
Okay, great. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure some of us will be at that by review.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a meeting with Richard Ricker Esquire regarding a request for storage parking at three thirty-five Maple Ave by Mag Retail Holdings, BMS, I don't know what L O means, and it's for three hundred and fifty-seven vehicles, I believe. Mr. Ricker, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, I know you've had a busy night, so I'll do this as quickly as I can. I'm surprised we're back here so quickly, but as you know, at four twenty Boston Turnpike, the demolition is really getting underway and moving forward. We have been, this is John Crandall, he's the project manager for McGovern Auto Group. And the vehicles that are over at four twenty, we really need to move them. There's quite a few vehicles there, as you know. The, my client is, for the record, I'm Richard Ricker, lawyer with offices at eleven Maple Ave. What you see here is a sketch plan that we put together. It has been adjusted a little bit by our engineer after some questions from the fire department. Ms. Galusha was good enough to connect me with Seth Colby, the deputy chief, who I spoke with this afternoon. This shows basically that the ladder truck can get through the site as this configuration is laid out. And Seth did tell me that he was going to let you know that he was okay with it. We did say that if we found that if there was a one or two parking spaces that needed to be adjusted, that we'd be happy to do that. He said that he was comfortable with that. Basically, a number of vehicles were ordered by my client some time ago, quite some time ago. They've arrived and we need a place to put them. We've struck a deal with Sam Adams, who was the owner of the, of that site, three fifty-five Maple Avenue. This is a, certainly not a permanent, this is what we consider a short-term solution to the parking issues that we have. And we'd appreciate it if you would allow us to do that.
So, are you going to move the cars from Oak Street, Boston Turnpike here?
Yes.
Oh, these aren't additional?
There'll be some additional because we've, they've got inventory that's coming in that they can't, they can't deal with.
No, I mean, totally additional.
No, not totally.
This is going to be an additional three hundred and fifty-seven cars on top of what's over there?
No, no, not at all.
Are you going to unload these off of the street?
They're going to be, most of them are going to be driven over.
And as you can see, there is a sizable open area that we've left at the Maple Ave side that I think.
Are you going to load the cars? Oh, you're not going to, you're not, you're going to drive them, okay.
Yeah. They're all sitting, the majority of them are sitting over at four twenty right now and we need to.
Are you just going to drive them, okay? Yeah, you have dealer plates, so you can do that.
Plenty of dealer plates.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? This is, I don't know if our board has dealt with one of these off-site parking things yet, but we changed the bylaws to allow this to happen with just a meeting and just tie it back to the license if we decide to approve these. So when you say temporary, it's going to be for the construction of the building, right?
I would assume that it'll be for the term of the construction of the building. Who knows if that takes six months? It's going to take one, it's going to be a year.
As short as possible.
It's an expensive endeavor.
I see they tore the building down pretty quick.
They want to move forward. I mean, they're going full bore at this stage.
Yeah, the demolition actually is seven eights done. They have one little section left tonight at six PM when I left there.
Questions, members?
I have a question. So you anticipate this property being completely vacated once your property on Route Nine is up and fully functional?
We do.
Okay, so.
Yeah, this is certainly not intended for long-term storage of new vehicles. These are all, these are all brand-new titled vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the temporary storage of new motor vehicles at three thirty-five Maple Avenue by Mag Retail Holdings, BMS LLC, while the company completes demolition and construction of the facility at four twenty Boston Turnpike.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If there being none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, so voting. Mr. Rickar, you would appreciate this. I bumped into somebody at CVS yesterday who showed both of our ages when you referred to four twenty Boston Turnpike as the pure property.
Absolutely. I'm afraid that does show our age.
Not many people know it by that name.
Well, another thing that shows my age is, thank you for the single tax rate, Beth. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Take care. Thank you.
Okay, that's it for action items on the agenda, correct? So we're on to, we're on to correspondence. So item ten is an email dated October twenty-first from Jessica Pacico, thirty-seven Rosedale Avenue, regarding border health reinspection, number four on thirty-seven Rosedale Ave, so noted. Item eleven is an email dated October twenty-second from Henry Pregasi, one hundred Francis Ave, regarding the Town of Shrewsbury logistics. This was in regards to the first, I believe, drop-off. Mr. Mizuka replied on behalf of the board and adjustments made to that situation. And this Saturday, things went much more smoothly. Item twelve is an email dated October twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, from Judge Woodruff, fifty-one twenty-two Avalon Way, regarding the third heavenly body, so noted. Item thirteen is a letter received October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, from Bay State Roads, regarding the Road Scholar Award to John Renaud. John's the public works supervisor for the Highway Division. He got that award for completing thirty-five course hours. So congratulations to him. That training is definitely helpful to someone in that position. So we give him credit for educating himself. Item fourteen is a letter received October twenty-sixth from Diane Moally, trustee Paul Moally Realty Trust, regarding Chapter sixty-one A, ninety-one Walnut Street, so noted. That is related to the application to continue keeping that as a Chapter sixty-one A property, which protects the property and also gives a tax relief to the owner of the property if it's in that status. Item fifteen is an email dated October twenty-second, twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, from Sophia Felonia, legislative aide to state representative Hannah Kane, regarding the Mass Works grant press release for the town, regarding the town of Shrewsbury. The Vaca Polito administration announced that Shrewsbury was approved for a three hundred thousand dollar grant from the Mass Works Infrastructure Program to support the Clinton and Holden Street water and sewer expansion projects. And in addition, Shrewsbury was approved for a three hundred thousand dollar grant to support the Hoppet Turnpike with Route Twenty, Phase Two Sewer Improvement Project. This, they're both important, but this was a big win. We waited forever to be able to sew this portion of Route Twenty, which really was impossible until we were able to hook into the Blackstone in Worcester. It really gives us the opportunity to help the redevelopment or the development of Route Twenty. So that's part of a big economic development initiative on that road, so. Okay, I think I got it all. Yep. Okay, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mm-hmm. Second.
Okay. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post, so voting. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.